Yeah. Good morning, and thank you for joining us for a meeting of the Tulare Public Cemetery District. This is a meeting that's a continuance of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors that is sitting as the Tulare Public Cemetery Board at this time. We will take up item one on our agenda today, and that is public comments. Members of the public may comment to the board regarding any item that is within our jurisdiction that is not appearing on today's agenda. Public comment can and will be limited to three minutes per speaker for a total of 15 minutes. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to the board under public comments?
Yes, we have Mary Cepeda.
October 9th, I had a meeting with Phyllis to discuss how many cremains can go into my parents' plots. And so while we were doing that, and I did ask her, because I was told previously to be polite while I was in the office, and I asked that the door be closed for privacy. I did ask Phyllis, is it okay to close? And she seemed to seem okay with it, so I closed the door. But then Clara had come in several times, and at one point, she's like, why is this door closed? I said, for privacy, and this way you can focus on getting your work done, too. That was as snarky as I got. But then she threw out, well, I'm the district manager. And to me, when people throw out titles, they really don't mean anything to me, because she still works for the public, like all of you, a job to do. And at one point, she really wanted to, she goes, well, I can take over this meeting. But when I called Lydia, the receptionist said, I told her what I wanted. She said, well, you meet with Phyllis. And so Phyllis and I were doing fine till the interruptions. And bottom line is, for months, or the past year or more, what you don't know is, that office was supposed to be for privacy, for patients meeting with Phyllis, especially those that got to bury family or whatever. So, and the, you know, the door is supposed to be closed. That's why they had previously locked the door on the outside, wouldn't allow anybody in. But now you go through the back, well, the new entrance in the back of the building, go through there, through the employee break room, across through Clara's office, and into that front room. When it came time to leave, I said, I just want to go out the original front door, if that's okay. But Clara insisted she wanted to take over, and at any point in time, she was not listed as someone to meet with. So, and I said, no. And I did mention that I would be speaking about this today. So I do need a future meeting with Phyllis, because family has questions now that we've got some of the information needed, what they need to do, because some of them don't, one doesn't live in the area, and all the documents that we need to sign, I have to make copies, not a big deal, but there's other, you know, questions. And I just want to finish up with Phyllis. And I would like privacy. I like the door to be closed, and I would like for her to get her work done, you know, in a timely manner. Because I will say, if you've looked at some of these sheets, they were timestamped October 19th, and these are the August financials you are looking at. You see in the top corners, you know, why, and this was already October 9th. Why weren't they already done? I mean, I'm looking forward, we're so far behind. I think September should be close to done as well. Okay, thank you.
Next public comment request?
Vicky Gordon.
Good afternoon. I am here, basically, I know that us showing up here is not completely welcome. That's been shown to the citizens, as I represent some of the citizens. And I know that what I'm going to say is going to repeat what I have said before, but it still stands, because the citizens in the community have not seen what we're looking for. Though I do want to say that I truly appreciate you sending out the extra workers and getting the grounds cleaned up and everything. Everyone really, truly appreciates that. But we're still looking at, not to say that you aren't, I'm not saying you aren't working on things, but we, as citizens in a community, are not seeing yet the transparency or the accountability. And so until that actually occurs, where the citizens and our community can see what has been done, what's being done to correct the issues and the problems of the past, whatever length of time here that we've had that, that put us in this situation, I'm going to be here, if at all possible, and I'm just going to repeat what I'm saying, is we, as a community, want transparency, and we want accountability. We want to see that it's our tax dollars. It's our tax dollars, and we want to know what's going on, and we want to know what's happening, and we don't really think that it's clear and it's transparent. So, thank you for listening, and I'm sure I'll see you again. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next comment?
Anna Lamone.
Good afternoon, board members. Okay, to the Board of Supervisors, I am requesting a resolution in reference to the document presented to the board on September 23rd, 2025, titled Tulare Public Cemetery, Cemetery Record, I'll repeat the verbiage again, Cemetery Record Plot Selection. It has been conveyed to me via email by Councilwoman Thomas Sten, the document in question is not part of the contract, it is used as an internal worksheet. I attended a verification audit committee on March 23rd, 2025. I have recorded footage, because I recorded it myself, and was presented by Clara with former Board Trustees Stephen Prusant and Michelle Lima. A document was being reviewed and audited from a client's pre-need record file, and Michelle asked Clara, now, quote unquote, now let me ask you, before they go out, they come in and they pick out their grave, did they go and probe and make sure that it's a grave that shows empty? Basically verifying the plot purchase is an empty vacant plot. Clara states and replies, this is when it's a pre-need, before they even buy the plot, they always probe it. Let me state for the record, this was not performed by any staff employee when selecting the plot, which is a evidentiary record. Is this why Phyllis and Clara refused to sign the document? But what was conveyed to me, it is an internal worksheet. I am not going to ignore, ignore that and accept that it's just an internal worksheet. I am very familiar with a record and an internal worksheet. Per the record footage, there is also a backside to this document. Mine was given to me blank, and it references, because it's on the video, it referenced to the burial interment of the purchaser. Two groundmen, two groundsmen verifies the plot for burial, open and close, they print their name, signature required, date and time. This is, this here is a record, evidentiary record. I ask the board a resolution to this matter. I've experienced error and omissions with my mother's records, now I'm having to experience my records as well. I request a resolution to this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Next public comment request?
That concludes the public comment cards.
Is there any other general public comment at this time? If not, we will, oh, okay, go, please come forward, state your name.
My name is Alberto Aguilar, and my public comments are regarding the issues relative to the financial nation on the agenda that is inaccurate, misleading, and inconsistent with the laws that govern public cemeteries in California, and the lack of transparency and accountability at the Tulare Public Cemetery District. There is a posting on the cemetery website that states, quote, "Our district is dedicated to operating in a transparent manner," end quote. But that's far from the truth. The board is well aware of the lack of respect and transparency by the staff and the district manager of this cemetery, but they shamefully sweep the complaints, the complaints, under the rug. The laws that govern public cemeteries are found within the Health and Safety Codes 9,000 through 9,083, and this board is not in compliance with those laws. The board is not in compliance with the Health and Safety Codes 9064, which you just heard a complaint of, 9076, and 9078.
Any additional public comment? Okay, at this time, we will close public comment, and we will continue on and take up the next item on our agenda, and that's the consent calendar. We've got items two and three on the consent calendar for consideration. Any corrections or comments by board members? Members of the public?
I would move approval of the consent calendar.
Motion by Supervisor Shucklin, seconded by Supervisor Townsend. Please cast your votes. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, now we're going to move on to the on-time portion of our meeting and take up item four. This is a request to approve and accept a report on the August 2025 financials and interment count. Good afternoon, Clara.
Good afternoon, everyone. You'll see that the layout is a little different. Hopefully, it can, it can be understood a lot clearer. The balance sheet is still as original as was before. What you have on the profit and loss is separated into the funds, because when the agenda was, the budget was created, it's budgeted by specific funds. So totaling it at the bottom, basically didn't clarify to everyone exactly, you know, our expenses and our profits. So I separated the funds individually. So you have the first one, that's a 772, the general expense fund. And I kind of highlighted a little bit of the cost of goods sold in combination with the, the regular expenses. That's where we get our budget of the 1.352. You can kind of see at the bottom, on the last page, the COGS, 131,000 total expense, that's for the vault purchases and the different things that are an actual cost when we purchase the items. And then you have the actual, the other expenses, anything from the lawn maintenance supplies and such is the 1.221,500. The combination of those two is the 1.352 that we come up with on the budget, and that's just for the 772 general fund. Then you have the endowment that's attached, that shows all the income from the endowment that was through the month of August, and so on and so forth, for the other funds, pre-need and such. So all separated. Is there any questions on this so far?
Any questions from board members?
Okay, Mr. McCarty, you also had a question about, I believe it was, the publications on the last meeting. And so the publications, and I let you know, I would get back to you, includes, basically, membership dues and legal notices. So anything that, like Streamline, which is our website, that's included in that fund, in that expense. Our Pacific Employers, which is an HR, also the CAPC membership, all those are listed under the publications and legal notices. Why it's under there, I'm not sure, but that's just how they've had it all along, so I've just kept it in that, in that expense. We're pretty much on track with our spending as far as the expenses and the income, as to what was pretty much being projected. We will not get, of course, our property tax until December, so we are going to be in the red up until then, probably till the end of December or in January. That's when you're going to see the difference come in, and where it starts balancing out. Any questions?
Questions? I don't think so.
And that's all I have on that, so.
I'll have your report on the financials. Okay. Go ahead, Supervisor McCarty.
Microphone. It's all right.
So I just want to go over some things to make sure I have an understanding. Thank you for answering those questions. If we go to the balance sheet, 12, 001, other current assets, there's $66,339 and 68 cents of undeposited funds. Do we know what that's about, what that's from?
The inventory asset would be anything of like the vaults that are in, in stock that we have. So that's about what is the asset as far as those. That's basically sellable, that's kind of listed under the cost of goods sold. So anything that we have in stock that we can sell. So anything that we have in stock that we can sell. The undeposited funds is checks that came in last minute, so right before it got reported onto this report. So these are checks that are still to be deposited, carrying over to September.
These carried over since when?
Usually, sometimes they come in last minute, like on the day of, and so before she can get to the bank, it gets recorded here but not deposited into the account. So it just kind of stays in that limbo right there.
And a couple of things that I see, and I probably have asked this before, to be honest with you, so I apologize, I just slipped my mind. Hold on, let me find a page here. Well, so if you go to the page one of three on the reconciliation detail, there's a, and I can't find it right here, but we have a bill payment on July 25 to the Golden State Risk Management Authority of $7,294 with a balance of 18, but it's somewhere on the other sheet, and I lost my place, to be honest with you, that's what I've been looking for. The numbers don't seem to add up, and I wish I could look it up. Do you know where it would be on the, on the spreadsheet, the insurance?
So the Golden State, it's about eighty-seven thousand dollars a year that we pay. That's broken up in the 12 months. So part of it you're going to see in the liability, and then the other part you're going to see in the workers' comp. So you'll see that part of it into the payroll section of it.
So it's broke up into two sources?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. That would help that. And then if you look below that, there's a bill payment on July 28 to Mary Rita Ribero for a negative 2,000. Beneath that is a bill payment, 731, to David Voight for 4,000, and beneath that is another 731 to Robin Edwards, is 2,500. If my memory serves me correct, that's almost the cost of purchasing plots. Is that what this is?
That is the grave repurchase that we purchased back from them. So we ended it on, I believe was the second meeting of July, that we ended the grave prepurchases, but there was still some lingering on that checks that they hadn't cashed yet, and so that's what those are. So anything that, the appointments that were done before that official resolution, these are the checks from those.
But do, and correct me if I'm wrong, it says the date, July 28, 2025, and that number 5065 on Mrs. Ribero, that should be the check number, correct? Is that what that is, where it says number? It says type, date, number. Are those check numbers?
That would be check number.
Okay. And then to Mr. Voight, 731, check 5067, which, and then you've got 731, check 5068, so they're pretty much in sequence. The date on this is a date far after we stopped purchasing of plots.
That could be when they actually cashed. I apologize, you said page one, one of three?
Page one of three on the Tulare Public Cemetery Reconciliation Detail. And this would be, I mean, of course, our detail would be the date we assigned the check, not, because if you did it on July 28th and the 31st, I don't know if we would, well, we're October now, maybe we'd see it, but wouldn't that be the date of issuance of the check? Because they're all sequential. You start with June at the very top, and it all goes down, June, July, August. So my question is, is were plots purchased after we said not to?
No, plots were not purchased, were repurchased after, no. I need to get the exact date of the resolution. I apologize, I don't have it offhand. And the contracts are signed with the actual date when they come in.
So we may have signed a contract before, and then because we entered into an agreement, we paid later? Is that what?
That is possible. The check could possibly have been issued later, because we have to wait for the PVQ, the money to come in from the account before we can actually issue the check. So we don't issue it on the day that the contract is signed.
Okay, and then we have not purchased any more plots since, right?
No.
Okay, and that practice is completely stopped, correct?
I'm sorry?
That practice is completely stopped?
Absolutely.
Okay, and, and so going back to page two of three on the reconciliation detail, that's the part, top quarter of the page, and I think I've asked this before, and if I have, I apologize, but who is Reed Schaefer?
He's one of the handymans around the cemetery. He's been a while, he's been there for a while, so different, various things that he fixes, and he, it's his, he doesn't have a crew, so it's just himself. And so as far as the prevailing wages and stuff, he's fairly cheap and has done a great job for the cemetery. So any kind of fixes, it could be fences, it could be different types of repairs.
So he doesn't submit a monthly invoice or anything? Because I see a check here for $1,798.29 on July 28. Then there's an $1,806.93 check on July 31, three days later, and then we show him down here in August 25 for 100. He doesn't submit a monthly check, where we just pay him an invoice, we pay him one time?
No, he only submits them per project.
Okay, and what about boot barn on August 25 for 150?
Those are the PP, the protective boots for the employees. They get a 150 voucher once a year.
Okay. All right, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, and I just, following up on that, because I did look into this as well, my read on this is, on the reconciliation detail, it shows a bill payment for a check, 7294. That looks like it's a monthly payment, and if you go back up to the, let's see, on the budget performance, I just want to make sure that this is my correct interpretation of this. I see the total insurance line is 55, crap, I clicked out of it, 55, 798, or, yeah, 55, 798, and then you go up, and then you get to the workers' comp, that's 31, 736, that roughly adds up to 86,000. So is that the total of the insurance that you're talking about that goes to Golden State?
So.
Workers' comp and the insurance total in that insurance section of 55, 798, so the 710 insurance account?
Correct. If you're looking at the profit and loss, yes, that is correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, any other questions, comments from board members? Public comment? Please come forward, state your name.
Mary Sepeda.
Alberto, I think you were called first. Go ahead. All right, you got up first, go ahead. A is before M. I'm just going alphabetical.
I heard that, but you're not hurting my feelings at all.
I didn't say age. A is before M.
No, no.
That's what I said. I didn't say age before beauty. I said A is before M.
All right. So y'all just went ahead and approved the consent calendar, and item number three, it's a fund transfer of $77,211.41 from the Endowment Care Fund, that's 773. If you look at the Health and Safety Code, the principle of the Endowment Care Fund cannot be touched, okay? So therefore, you cannot transfer any money from the Endowment Care Fund. You can transfer money from the Endowment Care Interest Fund, which is 817, but you can't do that either because you've already depleted that, okay? And if you give me some time, I'll let you explain, I'll explain to you how you depleted it, which was quite rapidly. But first, I want to make it clear that you cannot transfer funds from 773, which is the Endowment Care Fund. And I mentioned earlier, okay, that you're not following the laws that govern public cemeteries, and that's one of the laws, okay? But here's what happened. On August 14, 2025, I submitted a public record request to Clara and Pete Vanderpool, requesting a copy of certificate deposit in the amount of $2,000, $200,000 per resolution 2324 number seven, adopted by the Board on June 22, 2024. And then on August 26, 2025, a motion was made by Larry McCary, seconded by Dennis Townsend, to rescind resolution number 2023/24-7 in amount of 200,000, and return the money back to the pre-need fund. This action by the Board was necessary because Clara had not complied with the original adopted resolution of June 22, 2024. On August 26, 2025, the Board adopted a transfer of 250,000 from Fund 817 to 772, and that's, that resolution number was TPC 2025-022, okay? On September 23, 2025, Clara Bernardo submitted a request to the Board for the transfer of 250,000 from the Endowment Care Unreserved Fund 817, which is the only one that you can transfer money from because it's unrestricted, to the operational fund 772. A motion was made by Larry McCary and seconded by Dennis Townsend to approve the transfer of $250,000 from 817 to 772. That being said, the remaining amount in Fund 817 is $2,998.43.
Thank you for your comments.
Got it?
Next request is Mary Sepeda.
You know, it's difficult trying to do these transactions, these accounts, because 817, of course, this is August, you still haven't removed the 250,000, which leaves about $3,000 in that account. And so, you know, I don't know how much more you can take out of certain accounts legally. I want to get back to the budget, profit and loss budget performance. Now, under the insurance, let's go back to that, because 55, 798 is the annual budget, yet Clara just said something about 87,000 is the budget because of these payments of 729450. One was made, check number 5061, July 25, another one, August 25, for a total of $14,589. But if you go on this profit-loss statement across, it says August is only 4650. Year-to-date actuals is only 9299. Where did I get this 14, 589? And I don't know how it's broken down into these other, you know, unless these are additional insurances on top of the 7294. They just don't add up to me, so I don't quite understand that. And then again, when you go back, the next profit and loss, what Mr. Vanderpool touched on about the graves repurchased or stopped, or Mr. McCary, the year-to-date actual should be $8,500. That's been spent, so that should still be included in this profit-loss statement because those were in July, and July is the beginning of the fiscal year. So, you know, it's just, I'm not an accountant, I'm not a bookkeeper. I, you know, I can balance my checkbook, but looking at this, I'm like going, wait a minute. And then, and then it's hard to discern some of these accounts because, you know, you've made transactions since then, this is August, and this is what I mean at that meeting. She should be working on this. Instead of working on August, you see the timestamps again in October for August information. It should be done sooner. She should already be halfway done with September, because those have come out like in the first week of October or so. You know, because it's hard working behind schedule, you know, you know some payments are already out of these accounts. So, you know, trying to look at two months ago, yeah, yeah, it may check out there. But, and then again, I'm just not, I don't think the overall balance, I think we're actually more negative than we, than is reported on here. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any additional public comment requests, Madam Chair, or Madam Clerk?
No.
Okay. Public comments that have not submitted a card, please come forward, state your name.
My name is Lynda Malloy. I was on the Audit Committee for six and a half years. I'm having a little trouble with ending bank balances and beginning bank balances. If you look at the July 31 bank balance in Bank of Sierra, it says there's $17,480.14. If you look at the August income, it was $70,890 even. August expenses was $119,639. That leaves you a negative balance of $31,268.86, and yet it is being reported to you that you have a bank balance of $58,487.72. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, please come forward, state your name.
Xavier Abala. Hey, the cemetery is looking really good. It's comparable to Visalia, so good job. Hopefully, it stays that way. I think it will. Just looking at internment counts, the cemetery's almost kind of got, you've got to look at it two ways, body burials versus cremations, because anecdotally, I hear funeral homes are doing more cremations. If that's true, there's not much you could do about that. But in the past, the old Board, not this Board, was talking about raising prices again to meet these budget shortfalls. I was against it because we're in a depressed area, and the more, higher you raise prices, you force people to go to cremation. So in order to understand where you're at, you should have an interment count that lets you know how many body burials and how many cremations. So maybe you can make a different decision. My understanding is we're the highest price around on body barrels. Maybe that needs to be looked at and lowered to bring people, make it incentivized to people go, go back to that. But unless you know those numbers, you have no idea where you're at. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Okay, I've seen none, I'll bring it back to the Board for action on this. Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor McCary.
Second.
Seconded by Supervisor Shucklin. Please cast your votes. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, item five is a request to receive a report from the district manager. Hi Clara.
Hi. I wanted to give a quick, I had my ground supervisor give me a quick kind of brief on his grounds too, and what he'd like to mention to all of you, and just to let you know. He says that along with the gopher guy that we have going out, it's about once a week or so, that he comes out there, continuing to set the traps out there, which has helped reduce. They're also starting the third round of spray around the headstones for nutgrass per county instructions. So that was really good, that he was able to work with yearhead maintenance. So he's gotten some really good tips from him, so he's continuing with that. He says that we'll also be aerating the hard dirt in areas and reseeding said areas as time permits. Also, the end of November, we'll start pruning our rose bushes, skirting the trees that need to be trimmed. He also mentioned that we are hoping to, we are hoping on trying to, a new pre-emergent to help with the weeds around the headstones this coming spring. We are working with multiple vendors to get the right pre-emergent that will work best here at our Tulare Public Cemetery. So he at least wanted to let you guys know everything that's going on out there with them. Along with that, we are hiring two full-time positions. Our count right now, we're at six, six crew, one being the ground supervisor, and then five crews. So we are actually hiring for two full-time positions. We've also received some contracts from San Joaquin Valley or Pollution, so we're at the next phase. Tom has those, he's reviewing those, so then I can bring them to the Board, hopefully for next month, and so we can get, hopefully get our new equipment, or some new equipment, at least by next spring when it starts getting busy again. Veterans Day is coming up. It's usually a group of Ag students that go out there and they put the flags up in the morning, eight o'clock in the morning, and then they come back in the afternoon at four o'clock and pick them up. So that's still going on. I've already met with her, and, and some, I think the Ambits also kind of come out and help a little bit with that, but it's mostly the Ag students of the county. Tree of Remembrance, that is coming up December 11th and 12th. We're still working out the details on that because we are shorthanded with employees as far as how, how we're going to make that work, and also with the freeway entrance, we're working with the farmer next door. He's not going to be harvesting anything, so it's possible that we can use some of his land for parking. We're still working out all the final details on that. Other than that, kind of, we've had like 32 services for this month, so it's been quite a busy month for short staff, but they're doing really well. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. Any questions from board members? Supervisor McCary?
Clara, I don't remember what meeting it was, but a couple of meetings ago, I requested an RFP, a proposal on contracting the maintenance, some of the maintenance service, surely it's partial. Where are we at in that process?
That's something I can work with Dan, I think about the same time that, Dan and I, it's something we can work on, the RFP, I think we've talked about it a little bit. So I'll continue to work with him on that.
Have we started it? Have we started it?
No. Honestly, with all the transition of getting Cindy and Dan in, I have not been able to start that.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Public comments on this? Please come forward, state your name.
Mary Sepeda. On the Tree of Remembrance about parking, I've looked at north, and you can do some parallel parking out there if you direct traffic a certain way on certain ends of it, because the streets are so wide. And instead of head, you know, head, you know, head to tail, it sets a lot more space. And it just takes a little, you know, in the dairy industry, we would call it bottlenecks. Figure out your bottlenecks ahead of time, figure them out, get them done. So that's what needs to be done there. And I thought pruning and stuff should start in December, January, when it's colder. Hiring two more employees now, there's a lot less work per se to do. It's going to turn into the winter months, and we don't know about the rain. And what are they going to do, maintenance, whatever? Work on those things and maybe hire them, start in February, you know, put out the word and fed or out people. And maybe in March, when the spring time starts to come, so they can get them in, when everything is starting to grow. It depends on our winter. Now, the other thing is, I would like to just say, in that future meeting that I want to have, I would request that the board say, please have that door closed for privacy because it's not a big deal. It's just, I'd like to get it done. I'd like without her, you know, if she's going to come in and out, she can just, and come in. It's not that much exercise to open a door, but let's, you know, give that privacy, which is what that room was built for or asked to be done previously, which is why you have the two women separated. And that's what I would like, just some more privacy. And that way I can get it done. I found out some interesting information, which I'll share at another time, because last night I was looking and going, oh my God. So that's, it's just an interesting tidbit about the cemetery in the past, nothing about today. So those are the things that I'd like to bring up. And yeah, I've seen some gophers out there, and it's just, you know, it's slowing down. So why do you need two more right now? Better question is, why did the two quit? Bye.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Public comments, please come forward, state your name.
Xavier Abala. The Tree of Remembrance is actually a really neat event. Hopefully, you guys can go to it. I think it brings something to the cemetery that most cemeteries don't have. There's a lot of, you know, people grieving, and this is an opportunity for people to share that grief with other people. I've often heard from people that when you lose somebody, especially a younger person, that people get tired of hearing about your pain. Well, this is an event for people who are sharing in that pain to, you know, meet other people that are going through the same thing like them. I do want to bring up, though, you guys did, I think that was you guys that did that overpass? I brought, took it over, but there's a lot of cars that come down there. And the last couple of years with that was closed off. It was extremely safe. There's a ton of people that park on both sides of the road. And I think you, you got a really safety problem there for people trying to, if they park across the road and they're trying to get across with the volume that comes over going south on that overpass, now that's a disaster waiting to happen. So maybe somebody can go out and try to figure out how to manage that. Thank you.
Thank you for the suggestions. Any additional comments? All right. Seeing none, I will close comments, and we will, I will look to council. Do we have any need for closed session?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we do have need for closed session, and I do not anticipate any announcement out.
Okay. At this time, the cemetery board will adjourn to closed session.